And then we never amended?
There's no problem. There's no...
Probably part of that's my fault. Or not, it's all going through the house.
It's all, it's everybody's fault because we're not protecting the residents. We made that thing. And then we're the seven going to add from three to ten.
Well, ten, we're following state law. You still have to come back if you read at the bottom of that. We're, we're doing everything exactly to state code when you're looking at state code.
But it goes from three.
No more than ten.
Correct. But why give the whole blanket when by the time it comes back to planning or something with that ten, the damage is already done? That's how I feel about that.
Yeah, but if they're gonna do a subdivision, they still have to go to plan. That's just so they can divide that land up if they go to sell, of course, so they can get it divided. If someone's gonna do a subdivision, they gotta come in. Even in agricultural law, they've gotta go through a different code and get approval. Even if they go to something else.
All those areas, those, those they divided into four, the most four dividing it, no four dividing it.
But, but if they're following codes, it's, to me, it's no different than if you have the spend laws, where they run back to agriculture, they wanna raise, they, they worry about cattle business, they wanna, they wanna raise food. So they're going to agricultural law, they're, they're passing it up. And they're taking what they have to do for their home, because that's law, that they've gotta make that a residential, at least one acre where their home's gonna be, because they taxed that differently than they do the agriculture. So we're doing that. So if we do the lot lines plays by state code, state code says you can do ten, and it has to be, make sure it follows all the, the codes and, and everything. So as long as they're following codes and approvals, and it's coming to us anyway after they've done their application. From what I've read in our packet, it's still gonna come to us, it's just gonna skip planning commission. They come to us, we're probably...
Right, and then I think on that same thing, okay, if it has to come back anyhow, why can't we just have it say three, and then they gotta come to us anyhow, then give us if they need more on the five or the seven or the ten? What's that saying? Forgiveness or whether they ask forgiveness and permission or something like that?
Well, and they said they need permission from the office, so the office personnel is fully aware, and they know what they're doing. They shouldn't have any, should be, with transparency there, because if it's, whether it's, you know, or ventilated, but if it's Ben, Ben's gonna say, well, you can do this, this, and that, and that. So I've got a guy, he's got the same smarts as Ben, and, you know, that's on his shoulder to make sure he does his job right. But it's our, our shoulders that, when they bring our attention here, it's, at least it's coming to planning commission, to council to say, this is what we're doing. If we have these questions, I wish we all raised these questions very, very bad part of it. And so now, it's just, it's less work for the planning commission, because the planning commission would normally... It's just like you align your line, your lot line. You're, you're, you should have had to come to the planning commission just to adjust your lot line between your property and your property.
Right.
Okay, so to me, if they're simplifying this part of it, and we're, and we're following state codes, state guidelines, and we come back in and we pass that, as long as we know that it's gonna come in front of us, so it's not just the mayor or our managers saying, let's just wipe this off.
Did I miss this point here? Is that zoning administrative thing still on there or did they?
On.
On that list, uh, number one. The plan exemption, remember before it said name somebody as the zoning administrator? Oh, it says mayor or designated manager, right?
Right, so whoever takes Ben's place is gonna be the person that, or even if it's mayor pro temp, it's mayor pro temp. That's him there, so just the mayor pro temp or, you know, just to start to handle that.
Thing that I had sent an email on after that, I thought we should go to the planning commission. That way there's more transparency on everybody. I believe that.
But if they're, but if they're, if they're taking down the ten lots, and they're following the code, if we're comfortable with our code where code already is, then why should it have to go to the planning commission if it's, if it's gonna be approval for ten, for ten or fewer lots? As long as they're following the code, they're supposed to, as long, because they still have to follow powers, laws, regulations. They still have to follow those guidelines. And if they're not following those guidelines, then it's our job to catch that up when it comes across as...
I can almost get to that point, but I just think that having one person, regardless if it could you, be mayor, Ben, and everything is out, like people knowing what's coming into their area, that bothered me.
Thank you. Yeah, but this, this doesn't, if, they can still subdivide it down, but it doesn't tell if they can, but rather do this, they're doing something wrong to make it possible to put in a residential house on their own property. I'm not sure we're going to tell those people what they can't do by law with their property, if they're following code. And if there's something we can, then...
There's just something about that.
Yeah, something, yeah.
Well, you know, that's, and that's fine. I was, I was more concerned with not having this in here. That says, "Application blocks will shall be published in the town council agenda by receipt of the receipt of application." So not, so not approval, but application.
Right, and it's on the new thing.
Michelle, can you hear me? Michelle?
That's how they did it. That doesn't tell residents anywhere. Do you think old Mary Jane Baker is gonna... That's a start, at least that was a...
Right, okay, so... That on our, that's on our agenda, right?
Yeah, it came on the amendment last year.
Okay, so is that discussion today?
This was, um, after the last planning commission, that was the thing that was suggested, and this is one, I guess as of when this was typed up.
Because that wasn't in our...
No, that, because this one, this one is the amendment, because there was a couple of changes there.
Okay, then it needs to be tabled, because so we have a chance to go over it and then...
Well, this should just let us know it's coming, there's no, no kind of...
Never mind, it's, it's the, okay. All right, okay.
That's just like to let everybody know.
Yeah. Gives us time to research it.
And if people, if residents take notice of things in love with themselves, that's a good thing instead of show up calling everybody and saying, okay, make sure you look at your agenda, the town, the APN, because stuff's coming in here.
Right. So you're thinking, just like a glove over there, face management?
Stop by a couple times, that's it. They said I, they said I can't wear...
Yeah, you gotta...
Can I get the mouse over here?
Can't wear one.
Give me the mouse, I'll just reset it.
Yeah, one more day officially tomorrow.
Usually memorizes what things happen. This is, um, good.
Problem with that. They timed it out on a Russian YouTube. And now it's on YouTube, so we can't start it again, we can't stop it.
Yeah, he is. Very grateful. And Chucky, and he don't like the house in the house. His dog always stayed in the laundry.
Kind of hard deal with that.
But not Chucky runs the house.
I'm still not in.
Well, you guys really, really liked you guys. I'd like, I'd like Chucky then.
I think he likes Chucky more right now.
Oh, I know what it is. Interesting stories. What the hell?
He doesn't, the guy's...
Yeah, Patrick, sure thing.
Unless he's running late.
Well, I can try the other one, I usually use. Why is it not, um, so, in other words, this is, um...
So now we need to go to YouTube, I think, and start our streaming.
I'll be like that.
Technical difficulties here, huh?
These are good ways to be learned, Michelle.
Problem I've never seen before, just started just with spinning. And then it went live, so now we can't cancel it.
Can you hear me, guys?
Yes, can you hear us?
Yes, I'm watching, I've been here for five minutes.
All right, so you, can you, um, now set up Zoom and save to go to that? You think it's already on there?
Yeah, the meeting, the meeting's open on this computer.
I don't think it's streaming though.
Is it still streaming on this one? Yeah, it's just a, it's a black and it's streaming.
All right, well, it's...
So you, you can't edit the live stream for here, and that's passing...
It's gotta go from Zoom.
My problem is, we can't end the Zoom meeting, because then it would kick everybody out to restart the live stream. I don't, I mean, I don't think we, if we have technical difficulties with YouTube, the meeting can still go on, right, Michelle?
Was it advertised as being available on Zoom?
Yeah.
To view.
And...
I mean, obviously not to participate.
It's on Zoom, it's just not, it's not streaming on YouTube.
Oh, so it's just the YouTube part?
Yeah.
So in YouTube, they can only watch but not participate?
Correct.
But on Zoom, they're still able to participate?
And the recording will be available to the meetings over.
And I think you should be okay.
So the other option would be to then kick everybody out of Zoom that's in it right now.
Re, reload, reboot it.
So I'm okay with whichever.
Well, I, obviously, I think the purpose is if you can get the YouTube up, that's, that would be the purpose.
Okay, so, let's, why don't we go ahead and...
Close out Zoom?
Close out Zoom, so all the participants that are on Zoom will probably be kicking you out here shortly, and when you do, just go ahead and log back in. Log back into the meeting.
Hang on two seconds here, we'll do that.
Michelle, you said that your eyes are like, like this.
Let's see what's going on, hang on a second, we don't have to exit Zooms. I'm gonna fix it.
Our, our IT support is working on it.
Don't cry, Ben. It'll talk.
Those are tears of happiness.
Where's his cake and everything?
We already ate it before you got here.
All right, well, I can't, for some reason YouTube is not letting us stream to it, and I don't know why. Anyway, but our, our, our other thing is working, so we'll just have to go with that. All right, so, sorry. All right, so we'll get going on this meeting. I'll be at, we're a few minutes late, let's, uh, start this meeting for the town council, September sixteenth. And if we all rise with cultural allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So let's do a roll call.
Debbie Cobb here.
Mike McLaughlin here.
Paul Edwards in here.
Marty Lozenby here. And, um, do we have any conflicts of interest?
No.
Heard by anybody?
No.
No.
And, um, mayor's town update, um, we've got a long meeting, so I think we'll, uh... One interesting note is the uptick in building permits that we have. We'll get that at the end of the meeting, but I was in a meeting today, and city of Huracan was up twenty percent. They went from two thousand to twenty-six hundred in one month's time, twenty-six hundred. Imagine that number of building permits in, in Huracan, so this southern Utah is on fire because of COVID-19. Consent agenda, guess I had a chance to review that.
Yes.
Any issues or questions?
I did. No questions.
Paul?
I'm okay.
Okay.
Everybody good making motions?
Yeah, I'm good.
I make a motion, we accept A, B, C on tonight's consent to gen calendar as stated.
Second.
And vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. And discussion action, we had an interview of candidates for town council seat. We have a process to do this, there's two rounds of voting, that we vote by the council, once the interviews are complete, and, um, so the first, the highest two in the first round of voting, they will move on to a second round. If the third or fourth round is needed, that'll happen as well, it'll be, um, by voice, you know, we'll actually state the person's name that we're voting for. Sean is here, and he'll be making sure that we don't, we've discussed this as far as proper procedures, I'll do best I can to do it right, he's there to call me out on it for some reason when you clarify something, and, uh, so we can do it right. There is, there are some guidelines of how to do this that the state lays out, and he's kind of done over those with, uh, the staff. So what's, uh, we'll just start at the top of the, the list here, and I think, uh, top of my list is Mary. So we're gonna give, we're trying to keep these interviews down to about five minutes' time, so it gives you a chance to say something, say your piece, uh, for the council to ask any questions. And we'd like everyone to come up to the front, so we're all saw on camera. So, Mary candidate.
Do you want me over here?
It's right, right there, it's fine. I think you're, um, yeah, you're on camera there, do that.
Okay, well, um, I'm applying for town council because I know I can help this town set goals and achieve them. My family calls me the cruise director. I'm always alone planning events and organizing help and getting questions answered. In my last job, I was a program manager in the R and D department for a company that makes life-supporting medical devices. My job was to make change happen successfully. In deciding whether to apply for the town council, I read the meeting minutes for the last two years. I saw a lot of discussion about problems with road quality, drainage, code enforcement, growth versus rural lifestyle. And yet, I still don't know what decisions have been made, and what measurable goals set, what plans agreed on, who's in charge of what, when these problems, when will these problems be solved, or even just improved? I realize that there may be just decisions and plans that are not visible, or maybe not. But I know our community needs an answer to these questions to begin trusting the town is on the right path. Either way, to help set viable goals, or just to improve visibility of goals that we have. I know I can help, I have in the past, so that's why I'm applying. Thank you.
So when you come up, if you get to stay here afterwards, in case we have some questions that we can direct toward you. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, I don't have any questions, any questions, Paul?
No.
Okay, thank you. Landon Holm.
My name is Landon Holm, I've been living through the past few years, I still love Apple Valley, great place to be. I still admire what Lawdy and the rest of the council members have been doing, and I wanna be part of the team. In the past, I've dealt with, um, A and O committees, county commissioners, city and townspeople with planning and zoning, different mine lot and subdivisions. And I think as far as that goes, I have great experience, and I really just wanna help.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions by, for Landon?
What would be something that you would wanna see changed?
Oh, I think the biggest thing is that, I think we're always coming to Apple Valley, and I think over that's ten years. So I think we should have, I think we should have good ordinances, uh, good things, prevent bad growth, but to help good growth, and I think it's very important how we proceed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Margaret Lusowski. Well, I'm just taking an order, it's your turn. These are held, they were given to me by Michelle, so we're just gonna go in that order.
Okay. Well, it's great to see a lot of new faces here tonight. I can see the faces in, but I'm still gonna give my speech. I know I have about as much chance as a snowball in hell getting kicked for this town council, but I'm, but I'm here trying again. I guess I, you know, this is probably like the fourth time I've tried. I wrote this, I wrote this out so I wouldn't forget anything. I could give you the campfire speech everybody gives when they are applying for these vacancies. I moved here for the beauty, the serenity, the peacefulness, the recreation, the rural living, but I think the residents want truth and facts, and someone who's willing to do the job. My background is, because this is what I forgot the last time. My background is, I worked for Stockbridge Room, I worked, um, I worked for the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, I was an angiographer for retinal specialists, and a scrap check for, um, retinal doctors. I did court research as an independent contractor, and I was a massage therapist. Then I retired, and I thought I would be enjoying the golden years, wrong. My question tonight is, why are we here again? Because of a conversation the mayor and, and a town council member had? That must have been some conversation. Wouldn't you have loved to been a fly on the wall to hear that? Maybe the time has come to pick a candidate that shows an interest in the town, learning the codes and procedures. I can tell you there are a few candidates here that, that have already done that. I know there are behind-the-door picks for these positions, because I was at a house when our mayor's name came into play, when he was picked for the mayor. This town needs some help. The mayor and the city attorney now writes the codes for the planning commission. Maybe there's too much work for the members in this administration. Maybe we need more members on the town council. Maybe there's a need for part-time employees or volunteers who are willing to work along with the planning commission or the town council on official things. Maybe we need a zoning administrator. I don't know the answers, but try something new. When, when these openings occur, it makes our town look bad. I know for a fact several of us have tried to help both the planning commission and the town council with suggestions. These suggestions are emailed before the planning or before public hearings and the meetings. I have been called a bully by one of the town council members. I have to say to that member, go back and watch some of the planning commission meetings when you wanted something passed. Is it bullying or is it just persuasion? In my case, it's bullying. In his case, it's persuasion. If I'm chosen, I would like to be a voice for the residents who feel there isn't any use to speak up. I would like to be a voice for people who live on dirt roads and make sure some of the road money is spent on fixing the dirt roads instead of fixing all the chip and seal and resealing the asphalt roads. Some of our roads are a mess and they need maintenance. And driving a rake over dirt road to smooth out the washboard is not fixing the underlying problem. It's just a Band-Aid, not a fix. I will try my hardest to hold this administration in check and not give a rubber stamp. But who, I guess I shouldn't have said that. That would be my opportunity. This, this town, this town needs a planning commission that is willing to do the work and not hand over their duties to the town council. It is unfortunate that residents of the town do not get involved unless the problem is knocking on their back door. All zone changes and subdivision have potential problems for the future. And thank you for listening and I, have any questions?
Yeah, I do. You've been pretty critical of me, for example, when it came time to, uh, do something with the ordinance regarding storage containers.
Yeah.
And what you're, you were upset about, as I remembered, is that I dared put a survey out to the whole committee to find out, community, why, how do people feel about that? How is that not being responsive to the community? Well, I'm asking everybody in the community, what do you want to see? And then we, the ordinances we tweak it was based on the results of that.
Okay, well, I'll tell you because you're, I, because, um, for one thing, surveys can be skewed whichever way you want them skewed. And for another thing, in the planning commission meeting, you went and you were saying, oh, I was up at Duck Creek and there were ship containers here and shipping containers there. And I went and did it and I went and I, let me tell you. And I went and I did a survey of the area up there. And out of 400, 400 residents, there were 13 shipping containers.
I went down one road.
Plus, plus you went,
And counted a dozen of them. Down one road.
Plus, well, you said you went to, you went to Duck Creek, so I went up there and I double-checked. Plus, you said you went down to, on the way to Page, you said that there were shipping containers here, shipping containers there. Well, I can't remember exactly how many there were, but there wasn't, there wasn't as many as you, you alluded to in the meeting. And then when I brought that to your attention, you asked me not to bring it out into the public here, out to the public, because you were running for mayor and you didn't want a big mess going on at that time. So you asked me, wait until after the election and then, you know, we'll take care of certain things. So I waited till after the election and I didn't bring anything up.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions?
Nope.
We have Andy McGinnis.
Many of you may or may not know me. The reason I'm interested in Apple Valley Town Council is for the opportunity to help steer the future of our community. As a volunteer firefighter, I had the opportunity to interact with many of our community and listen to their comments and concerns for our community. Many of years, many, my many of years serving my country and my community have given me the opportunity to interact with the public in various capacities and roles. I will put these lessons to work in helping guide the direction of our community growth, expenditures, and priorities. I'm a firm believer in God and country, the Constitution of the United States, and checks and balances. Giving those that have oversight or leadership roles the tools and support to complete their assigned duties and responsibilities. It is no secret that Apple Valley will be a hub of growth in the near future. Our community vision will need to be etched in stone and secured prior to that happening. A solid general plan that has been vetted, approved, and signed will help direct that future growth. We need to decide as a community how we are to conduct business with the inevitable onslaught of developers that will arrive. Completing these tasks is essential to maintaining our vision as a community. I feel my experience with listening and interacting with the public, decision-making, budget management, planning and execution, construction, both building and road, dealing with the emergent situations and my knowledge of the water system serve this community well as a community member or a council member. Last but not least, um, I fear that my fellow applicants and I are wasting our time to fill this council's requirement to go through the motions. Rumor has it a member has already been handpicked by certain members of this council weeks ago, which it makes the rest of us getting up here formal. I hope this council proves this rumor to be wrong and votes accordingly. If you can't tell, I call it like I see it and I make no apologies for doing so. This will probably make me the least desirable candidate. The last thing this council needs is another person to get in line for the program. Any questions?
Nope.
Nope. Richard Fisher.
Richard Fisher. Many of you know I volunteer on the road department, help great roads, help put in overalls, things like that. I'm also a builder in the houses around here, parking in St. George, elsewhere. I definitely think that we need to watch what we're doing with our town to make sure that our plan is in order and the way that we want this road, that means it's gonna grow, there's nothing we can do about it. I was in, in continued education last week for my state contractor's license. One of the guys teaching that was talking about economic development. They're talking about the permits and things that are going on right now. It was crazy because everybody thought we were gonna have a dead, dead year because of COVID. But it's not that way. It's going through the roof. And the guy teaches the class, one of the things he said was, his daughter came to him a couple of weeks back and said, hey, I'm gonna move to Michigan. He's like, what on earth, why would you do that? She says, well, I can get a house for half the cost of Michigan, he's like, can't hear. And he's like, well, and she's like, well, also I can work from home. She says, I don't need to be in the big city. I don't need to be, uh, right there in the thick of everything. I can go out to some rural community and enjoy my life and still have the same income as I have right now. And we've already been watching that like crazy out here. I mean, there's, I've noticed there's four, five houses in the last 30, 35 days that were listed and sold in our area in 35 days. I mean, it's common and then we need to be prepared for it and we need to know that the direction we want to go as a community is where we're heading. And we need to make sure that that's what we're following. I, I, I think that the position that's available is more geared towards roads and things like that. It's already what I kind of do. I feel I can be a good fit for that, can help us with that. I've been involved with Marty at the stake and helped us get our return lanes and all that kind of stuff in and out there on Main Street. So anyways, that's one of the reasons, that is the reason why I'm applying for this spot. Any questions?
No, for the moment, thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
I've got a question. Mr. Fisher, town council mayor, if you don't mind, if I'm mayor.
I don't think that that's appropriate. It's, um, this is for us.
This is an interview by the council.
This is interviewed by us.
I want to make it clear, you can always choose to, but if you do that, it would have been something you made clear at the beginning so that everyone,
Yeah, I'm sorry. I think it's, um, Pat Baker, Patrick Baker is here. I don't stand. Um, Del Beto.
Thank you for the opportunity to appear tonight. If I lean on this table or get shaky a little bit, it's not because I'm nervous. I have sugar diabetes, my wife would only give me a peanut butter deal as a meal for dinner. So I'm gonna lean over a few minutes. I don't know Mr. McGinnis and Andy McGinnis. First of all, thank you for your service, I appreciate it, especially for our country. I know Richard Fisher a little bit and, well, I wish there was some way we could take about 20% from all the candidates and mold them into one. I really like City, because there are some fantastic ideas and some fantastic viewpoints in the city and from our residences. And I think that's part of the council member's jobs is to be able to first and foremost, listen to what the city has to say, listen to what the residents have to say. Mrs. Osowski was up here a few minutes ago and I heard a couple of comments in the last couple of days about her applying and, and, and I apologize, they weren't overly optimistic, but I sure wish they recognized the passion that she has for what she, for her viewpoints and things she wants to do. I think those things are important. I think one of the biggest things that I see is, is a diversity of our residents. I was, I was driving into the house the other day and I don't know who the individuals you were in the truck, but I, I waved as went by and they just kind of stared at me and didn't wave back. And it kind of reminded me when I was a kid, my dad, who was one of the biggest B Sers in town, said, we were talking about waving people going down the road back in Oklahoma, and he says, you know why they wave with the left hand, don't you? And I said, no, it's because they're Democrats. He said, if they're Republicans, they wave with the right hand. So I gotta think, well, what happens if you don't wave at all? You know, well, attitude reflects leadership. We all, we've all heard that a dozen different times. And, uh, I, I've been in the development business, primarily the golf course development business for my entire life and a second generation of that. And my, I've been, served as the planning commission chairman here prior to and a member of the planning commission. I spent most of my life working on the opposite table of planning commissions and city council members trying to get development projects approved and work through, work through the semantics and all the difficulties. We've gone through projects as large as 30 and 40 million dollar jobs and the smallest hundred thousand dollar jobs. And the challenges are, always seem to be the same. Uh, I feel like I've got about 25, maybe 30 years worth of development experience that could help with the, the direction of the growth. Marty, mayor, mentioned earlier about the, some of the growth that was in Hurricane. We're, we're part of that. We have a development project down there and I know the difficulties we go through down there. We still have about 65% of the growth in Washington County that still comes out of the Wasatch region. Four years ago, we had about 11% came out of Southern California. That's up to about 18% now. We're still five-state region recruiting, recruiting home buyers in Washington County. And I, working directly with City of Hurricane and Washington County, I can attest to what Richard says. We're gonna get bombarded with growth for the next 10 years. I know developers that are already calling me in our groups, asking us, we know of any land available in Apple Valley, they can develop. It's, it's on the horizon. I think responsible government is important. I think that neighborhood leadership in the sense that we remember to listen and communicate with our, our residents is vital and crucial, especially as our numbers begin to grow. There's gonna get more and more difficulties, there should be more and more voices. And I think it's imperative we not lose sight of listening to our neighbors and to, and to the input of our communities. I want to, I moved back to Apple Valley because we lived, left here in 2012. My wife and I, uh, we thought about going back to Oklahoma, about going to Texas, about going to some other areas. But we chose Apple Valley because we absolutely love this little community of Apple Valley. It's a great, it's a great community. And I think there's a lot of good things on the horizon. Um, I think the education of, of being able to be a part of a growing city is invaluable. I think the education of being able to assist in both private and, and a, a, a city level in our community is, is the role and responsibility of every citizen. I don't think it should be divided from this seat to this seat out here. I think we should do all of it together and that would be my goal. Thank you, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Del.
Black Hawk. It was interesting getting ready to go before meeting because I got to pick up a little bit from everybody. I wasn't gonna tell them stories because they have a great story to tell. I always thought I'd end up at Oklahoma. That's where my family is from. My father was moving to reservation, my grandparents, I'm one of the two of us. And, uh, it was just by miracle that a great spirit set. You know, when my wife said, let's go on vacation, I said, let's do this fun. She had a map of the United States out, closed my eyes and landed someplace called Hurricane, Utah. We stayed at the motel six and, uh, we came up here and there was a fire meeting at the hall here. And I've been a firefighter my whole life, I started at 19 years old. And so I went into the meeting and I met Chief Ford and we became best friends. And he invited me to stay at his house for three days. We sold this house for sale, went down there and put the money down and got the house and created a great spirit. But they had to top your store. So you got to, when I came to Utah, moved here, they stopped me at the state line, made me put my hand on the Booker Morgan, raised my right hand and swear I'd be a Republican as long as I was here. They don't do that now because as you say, California were big Democrats, but that was the way it was when I moved here. Thank you, mayor, thank you town council for giving me a chance to run. I trust your decision, you'll make the best decision you can. Only Chief Ford has done more since I've been here for over 20 years. When I came here, the first week, went to the second best work in fire, this Apple Valley's ever had. And the guys did not have a fight, but they had the heart and soul. And I put the fire out for them and I helped them, yes, sir. And I knew that they needed help and I spent the next five years bringing our fire department up here. Bob Perry, any of you guys remember Bob Perry?
My father.
Your father. Your father was one of the greatest men who ever lived. He put, original, the fire department was an incorporation. And it was great. Bob was good. I used to go play cards with him, him and your mom, we was great. Your dad and Chief Ford and I went to Salt Lake City with the Capitol Building. When we left the building, we had $40,000 grant. Your dad helped me and we put together the hood which built this building. I physically helped build this building. I physically did concrete, put carpet down, did all that stuff. From that five years, I got, I got a grant for $2,500 from, um, Utah Power. I got, um, we needed a good fire truck and there was one for $36,000. And Bud Cook and I went to Orin, Utah. We negotiated him down to $6,000. Brought the first good fire truck here to Apple Valley. And we need a new one now, too. At the current last four years, I've been the chairman of the Republican Party for Apple Valley. I've been to the state, helped vote on your congressmen and your senators. I've worked hard at that. I've always been behind the scenes if I wasn't in front of the scenes. When Chief Ford came back, he asked me to come back for a year and help him get his department back together. I said, yes, sir, I will. I've worked many times, did many things for Apple Valley. In the meantime, I did my acting, I made three movies. I put on 30 fights in my career promoting them and some of those first was a hundred thousand dollars. So you gotta wheel and deal because if you don't pay fighters, you either fight them or it comes out of your check. And I've always been successful and never lost money in anything I've done. I love this town. I've worked hard for it and I did my best to help. I've never went against the planning commission or the town council with the exception of one time. The mayor went at the bar at $10 million and there's 700 residents, I couldn't see that. And we got, I helped get the state involved and they said, you can't pay one for a million for what we got it. I don't think, excuse me, Mr. Beto, I like you as a person, as a human being, but we don't have enough order in Apple Valley to do a golf course and that's your bread and butter, so.
I got hired a new job, it wasn't my bread and butter, it was mine.
Okay, okay. So I worry about a community and I work. Utah's the second driest place in the United States and we are the driest county in the state of Utah. And so I'll work with the town council, but if you put me on the board, I don't want butt heads as much, no, I don't want to have to. I work for you and even if Black Hawk doesn't want a golf course, but everyone in this room votes for a golf course, Black Hawk will vote with the people, okay? I will vote with the majority of the people of Apple Valley. All right, good, sir?
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Thanks, Black Hawk.
Yes, uh, have anything to say at all or?
That's everybody.
That's, that's eight of them. We got everybody, right?
Yeah, one absent. Baker was absent.
Baker's absent.
I didn't see him walk in either, unless he's on Zoom or something.
Oh, and I did win the last election and I got 48% of the votes, so I did have some backing.
Right.
Paul, are you still there?
Paul, you got any questions?
Nope.
Okay, all right. Well, I think the, we should take a vote. Let's take an initial vote. Just state who it is that you feel would be our best candidate at this time. So, sorry to you, Debbie.
That's not fair. Um, I vote for Black Hawk.
And Mike?
Uh, my vote is for Dale Beto.
And Paul?
My vote is for Dale Beto.
And my vote is for Dale. And so Black Hawk and Dale will advance to the next round of votes. And we need to take one more vote to see if anyone wants to change their vote. So that's round one. Round two, Debbie?
I'm sticking.
Same. And Mike?
I'll stay in the same.
Paul?
Mr. Beto.
And mine's for Dale. So Dale Beto. We're gonna do this. We're gonna do an oath of office real quick for Dale Beto. We're gonna do an oath of office. So I have you stand and Michelle's gonna do an oath of office for you. Dale, you can join us up here when you get a chance, right?
Could I have 30 seconds?
Yeah, bet.
Make a statement. Folks, I'm, I'm humbled and I appreciate it and I apologize for some of the people walked out dissatisfied. If I looked around this room here tonight, they're my people. They're the people that I need to go win over and earn their respect and earn their trust and that would be my goal. And I, I apologize that I don't have all that respect, but it would be my personal contempt if that happened.
Okay, number three on our agenda is appointment of Mayor Pro Tem. Resolution R-2020-10. There's gonna be opportunities where I'm gonna scoot out of town and in my absence, we want someone else to be able to discharge, be able to sign checks or to run a meeting, for example, if I happen to not be in the, in town that particular day. This is kind of a housekeeping thing. Most of Paul was the Pro Tem before. You know, previous, you know, election cycle. And as we're going through this process, it just reminded me that we don't have one. So in other words, no one's appointed to be second, so to speak, and to take over a meeting if, in my absence, if for some reason. Anyway, I, I look forward to getting the road, but that won't be in the near future. But anyway, we just thought we should clean up the paperwork, so. Does anyone want to just raise your hand and volunteer or should we do a nomination for Pro Tem?
We don't have ones. I mean, you gotta stay.
I'm staying.
I mean, no vacations.
Yeah, no.
Well, Mayor, all I can say is, this is Paul. I've learned a lot just sitting on the council. Learned a lot from you and from, from Bob Campbell, who was there before. But I haven't learned it a lot enough, I think, to feel comfortable in that position, just based on my background as a police officer. I think I'm pretty level-headed, but I think I'd, I'd need to learn and have more background before taking that position. So I would certainly decline any nomination.
It's not what I want to hear, Paul.
Is it okay if I add to that, that you're busy out in Canyonlands right now?
Yes. A, a long way to vacation.
Break from hiking. Well, I, uh, you wanna, is this a job you want, Mike?
No, it's not what I want. I, I'm just, we're gonna throw it on top of Dale because I,
We could.
I,
Are you okay to do that?
I don't have time.
Can I resign next week?
If you, if you want to, I suppose you could. All right, so I'll move that we appoint Dale Beto as Mayor Pro Tem. Resolution R-2020-10. I want to do a second on that.
I'll second.
And vote?
Aye. Aye.
Staying.
I think you gotta vote. No, if you're here. Is that right, Michelle? They can say, okay. And I'll do an aye. And you vote for yourself, I guess, so. All right, and item number four on the agenda, general plan map change parcels AV 1376A and AV 1376M from R1 to agriculture. I, I wanna, this is okay to probably do the general map change. No, I think that, do you have that description?
I would like to make an amendment to my spot zoning for the one acre. I move it from the bottom of the property to the top. We would like to amend the location of our one RE spot zoning. I would like to request the zoning to be moved to the northwest corner, starting approximately 25 feet from the north property line and 50 feet from the west property line, this would be the starting point. And the starting point, the lot will be approximately 290 feet east and approximately 160 feet south, creating a rectangle. I have a drawing to show.
I think that, um, so, though, I gotta have, uh, I think to pull this up, um, we need an official map. Meets and bounds, is that right, Sean?
Well, Mayor, actually, when I'm looking at this, I'm, this is, this is for, is your call. Normally what we have is you have the recommendations for planning for that location. And you have that description to change in any way that you provide.
Yeah, she's just moving. We're in the same parcel. I'm okay with the change. Right, that's all true. I'm gonna put that question right back at you, though. As the,
Basically, she's moving.
What I'm trying to articulate is that the legal description that we've been given so far is at the bottom and what we have right now is not a legal description. And she's give, she's telling us where it's gonna be.
I don't know.
Is that applicable to, to approve this subject to the legal description, match for description?
If you feel comfortable in this description here, the exact location of that, do you want to make that clear on your motion if you were to approve that, where this location is? And that would be subject to getting a legal description that your buy closes and matches that.
Okay. All right, so we'll have to have an actual description from an engineer that gives us meets and bounds, but.
Yeah, we're gonna work on that. I, I'm gonna make a little bit of a quick comment so everybody knows the reason why she's doing this. They're trying to save on the road to, so their expenses aren't so high.
Right.
There's no reason why we should.
It's in the same parcel. It's going from this one corner.
Yeah, it just looks like you're taking it closer to the road, so you're probably cutting out your.
Anyway, I don't have a problem with it. I just, I just know, I'm cleaning up the paperwork. We do need a legal description we can add to that, so.
So Mayor, just to mention this up for the first time. We have a, obviously on the last legal, you add size, acreage.
It'll be one acre, one acre.
It'll still be the same.
Yeah, the rest, the rest is ag, so it's just the one.
This actually will be an acre width after the eastwards are taken out, whereas the other one was an acre before the eastwards were taken out. So it'll actually be a three acre difference.
All right, well, um, does somebody think they can handle that motion or do it?
You can make the motion.
Um, so I move that we approve, the first off, what we're approving is the general map change. I remember, right?
Right, number four?
Parcels AV 1376A and AV 1376M from R1 to agriculture. And applicant Jeff and Suzanne Spindlove. PC recommendations four to zero. I move that we approve that general map change.
I second.
And vote?
Aye.
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 Mayor, just a clarification on that. Obviously, I was just reading this, but.
Yeah.
Did you, did you refer to this exhibit or we need some description on the minutes of what is different than what the planning commission considered, right?
Yeah, what, what happened on this, Sean, is that this is our one area. And the general map we just changed is for the rest of the property that is going to be agriculture. And where that one lot is, it's gonna stay residential.
Right, and so, is this different than what the planning commission considered?
Yeah, it is.
So what I'm just asking is that the motion reflect the new location?
Okay, so let me restate the motion.
Or you could just clarify right now on the record.
Okay, I'll clarify on the record that the, the zoning, uh, the general map change for item number four for the parcels AV 1376A and AV 1376M from R1 to agriculture. The applicant has requested that we move the location of the one acre RE spot zoning from the, I want to say, they want to move it to the northwest corner of the property, stating approximately 25 feet from the north property boundary line, 50 feet from the west property boundary line. And this will be the known starting point. From, from that starting point, the lot will be 290 feet to the east and approximately 150 feet to the south to equal one acre lot. And that will be for the RE for single family on that parcel.
And that will be approved upon, it's approved, but it's conditional upon getting the legal description.
Yes, and so this is a conditional approval on you providing the proper legal description to us on this as well, so we add this to the file, okay? So, and described. All right. All right, everybody okay with that?
Yep.
And the next item is zone change of the same parcel.
Did Dale vote on that?
I do.
Yes, yes. And so the zone change on parcels AV 1376A and AV 1376M from OST, OSC to A10 and RE1. And again, this applicant has provided a, just a revision. She's moving her RE one acre parcel from, as the map sits, I would describe it as the lower right-hand side of the property to the upper left-hand corner of the property. And as described, they would like to amend, this is at their request. We'd like to amend the location of our one acre RE spot zoning. I'd like to request the zoning to be moved to the northwest corner, starting approximately 25 feet from the north property line, 50 feet from the west property line. And this will be known as the starting point. From that starting point, the lot will be 290 feet to the east and approximately 150 feet to the south to equal one acre. And this is provided to us by Jeff and Suzanne Spindlove. And I move that we approve that zoning on that property.
I second.
And vote?
Aye.
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 Barry's. And get that paperwork into us as soon as you can, so. That, let's see, we didn't reference in those motions, that is, those motions were ordinance 0-2020-18 as well on that. I just thought I'd mention that. And also ordinance 0-2020-19. For those last two. All right, our next business, let me catch up here, is item number six, zone change of parcel AV 1354-B from OST to OSC to C2 Commercial and CTP Cabin Tiny Home Park Zone. Our applicant is Vane Properties. PC recommendations was four zero. We're going to, I'm going to ask that we table this item for this particular time. When you look at the size of the property that this entails, this is 50 acres of property, which gives us a possibility of 500 future cabins based on our current ordinance. And we're not able to limit the size of that project at all if it is zone CTP Cabin Tiny Home Park. And what, I've talked to the applicant about this and recommended that we do a PD zone approval on this, which requires a developer agreement. And in that developer agreement, it will be mirroring basically the cabin tiny park zone requirements. They'll have to bring this project to the planning commission for review so we can look at their fences and, you know, walkways and, you know, buffers and all those different things that we are, have kind of built into our code for their approval. Basically, it's that they want to have 100. I've even suggested that maybe they build in, you know, 10 years from now, you might want 50 more kind of a thing. And so we'll see what they decide on their developer agreement, but we're trying to limit them to, say, no more than 150, maybe 200 tops on that property, but their plan is only 100 right now. And they might just go there and they can come back and ask for more later if they wanted to. And so we've, I've passed on the name of an attorney that they could maybe look up to give them this, their agreement on us tabling this at this item at this time. So I move that we table this item and we'll look at that again and probably PCS. I have an initial drawing, but they don't have the whole package and I need to kind of work with them on what it is that we expect to see in, in the planning. Right, and that's, well, they're gonna have, it's, they have a huge buffer there.
Oh, I know.
And it'll be, it'll be, you know, and the neighbors are the one, everybody that's, I've talked to on this, they love the project. They love the idea of it. The only complaint anyone had on it was, really, it could be as much as 500 if they sold it off to someone else.
Yeah.
And, and I get that and I think that's, this is the right move. We'll just make it a PD and we'll just limit them through a developer agreement that helps limit them to what they say they were gonna do. So that way, we're not looking at 500 homes in the future. Right, it's recorded on the property, so. Right, it's recorded on the property, so. Anyway, but we, we look forward to that project coming to, uh, out to that, uh, particular area. And, um, that, um, for those that aren't familiar with it, this is neighbors to, uh, Richard Fisher's house. And he's excited about it because that means water out to his house finally, because these guys will have to bring a pipeline all that way. So, anyway, and that helps out, so everybody on, on Coyote. Alright, so, um, I, so I recommend that we table that at this point, and we'll, um, take this up at another meeting.
I'll second that.
And vote?
Aye.
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 And that carries. And, uh, item number eight, discussion on, uh, possible action on refund of lot line adjustments. Um, our state code has changed enough that, um, it seems like they've pretty much eliminated the need for lot line adjustments. And, uh, we have some applicants that have paid some money, and I think I'd like to just go back to the last twelve months and since the beginning of the year, let me put it better stated that way, that since the beginning of the year, and I'd like to issue refunds from the beginning of the year to present, did, uh, did you ever get a number on that?
I didn't, no.
There's not that many of them, I mean, it's two or three of them.
Yeah.
Anyway, that, uh, we are charging, uh, people for lot line adjustment that apparently we don't have to even, uh, go through the town law, so why charge them a fee? I just assume, uh, if we're gonna allow people today to not do lot line adjustments, let's just refund the money on those last few, at least.
For the year.
So, anyway, um, so I move that we, uh, just do a refund on those since the beginning of the year.
I'll second that.
And vote?
Aye.
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 And, um, the next item on the agenda is item number eight, and it's the, uh, same thing. It's the fee schedule. It's just removing off that fee schedule the, um, lot line adjustment fee. And so you'll see in red, well, I guess it's in black because it's copied, page three, we just drew a line through that, and we're gonna remove that from our fee schedule. You want to, want to do a motion on that?
I make a motion, we accept the amended, amended fee schedule.
I'll second that.
And vote?
Aye.
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 And, uh, that carries, and. Adoption of ordinance twenty twenty twelve correcting prior motion when adopted. Ben, can you clarify that?
Absolutely, yeah, so we had a motion made, um, ordinance twenty twenty dash twelve, this was a couple of months ago.
That's a tiny cabin home.
Yeah, and, uh, when the vote, as Michelle was doing the minutes, she found that the motion made, and this was probably because it was how it was written in the agenda or something, but something related to that, was twenty nineteen dash twelve. So, the, this agenda item is just merely to accept or adopt ordinance twenty twenty dash twelve.
Okay, so the, uh, the amendment to the cabin tiny home park ordinance, uh, had a wrong number on it, um, back when we approved it. So I move that we, uh, just, uh, it's more of a clerical, there's no change to the ordinance at all, it's just a correction of the ordinance that accepts that. So that ordinance number will now be zero twenty twenty dash twelve. Second. And vote?
Aye.
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 And, uh, changes on, um, eleven dash oh two dash zero four zero necessity of plat exemption from, uh, plat requirements. This is just, uh, we're cleaning up some, uh, ordinances there, any discussion on this ordinance, any issues with it? Debbie, Debbie, just say on that?
I just didn't like from three to ten, but.
The, uh, our current ordinance right here allows us to only do three lots. And, um, a week after we do the three lots, the people can pay a fee again and come in and we can do three more. And then they can, a week later, pay a fee and come in and we can do three more. And I was trying to eliminate the need to have to keep going back to your engineer when you can accomplish the whole thing in a matter of, uh, you know.
Well, and the other reason for this too, uh, just looking up state code, uh, we're following the guidelines of state code as well.
And it's just a recommendation, the state code is just a, it's an arbitrary number they threw in there, it said it's reasonable. And we just copied that, our, that arbitrary number is all we get. Mayor Kennedy?
Thank you. Um, this has come up several times, they've been planning twice in the town council before, but, um, I'm still stating that I don't believe that the process we have is clearly defined well enough. I don't so much object to the change from three to ten as I do to the lack of clarity regarding the process. I do feel that considering, we just talked about the huge amount of growth coming here and a simple checklist that planning manages, you know, Ben sleeping, if Ben's leaving.
Cat's out of the bag now.
Ben's leaving.
We were trying to keep that a secret.
Five people on the planning commission and the mayor.
And even the planning.
You've done a lot of work.
Even the planning commission said they don't have the expertise to, um, manage that, and they didn't want to look at it, but we do have a checklist. Uh, thank you, Ben, for providing a checklist on your way out the door. That basically ticks off the boxes of many of the concerns, and one of those is, is we're also having Sean countersign on all of these lot splits to make sure that they're done in accordance with the code. And, uh, so he's, his signature lines on there along with, uh.
And it still comes to counsel, it still comes to counsel at the, after the application's done, the last part of the amendment or the, the ordinance on there. It states that it's coming to the agenda on the town council as well, from that, just skipping the.
If you go to the end of your agenda today, you'll see that there are some lot split applications that are listed there that we have on file, so it gives you a chance to.
See the signature blocks also.
I don't know what you mean by that.
Who signed it?
It'll be on the Mylar, but these aren't on our agenda or anything, they're, they're just memos on the, uh, on our agenda that says, these are the applications we have, we have not reviewed these, we haven't approved them, we haven't signed them off, they're just memos that in this, between the last meeting and this meeting, here's your applications that are on our desk. So anyone can look at those at any time and say, what, who's doing what?
Now, where can we look at that?
On the county website.
The county website.
You can just do the search of a, uh, property idea.
Well, I know where the parcels are at, some of them are huge. I have, I'm waiting for public.
Well, this is, this is discussion on this ordinance, so I'm okay with you, you know, asking questions.
Yeah, I just, I just would like to know, like, when you do these yourself, you know, you sign form, this is where most are gotten a lot of trouble, to see what side Chris thinks and not tell anybody, and I like the transparency. I think that's needed.
Well, yeah, we don't just sign them in the closet in the back room. I have made Michelle look at every single one of them, and then she has copies in the office of everything that we have signed. And we're also gonna have Sean countersign them, and we're gonna have Big Plains countersign them as well, so they can agree that they're accessible or things like that. I, and that's one thing in the ordinance that we have, I think that we should delete, um, when it goes down, the utilities, it does say Rocky Mountain Power. And I think that's, uh, we're lucky to have someone chasing down Rocky Mountain Power to, uh, sign off on our lot split and find out who's supposed to do that, and they're gonna be like, what? And I recommend that we delete that, that particular piece out there.
Transparency, but I think this helps everybody.
And this is, uh, this is also, um, going to be, uh, staff delegated.
Yeah.
Uh, we're.
And this will always be on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Yes.
I wonder if you still will have some confusion in the, uh, paragraph E. I can see you're trying to make sure it was parcels, how it's handled for that, and that being true. I don't know if that's in the library, or if you've got large parcels that you're trying to do an act split, and you put that in there where it has to have a public right of way.
Then it has to have a what? I couldn't hear you very well.
It has to have a public right of way.
Yeah, it, everything has to be on a public right of way or it can't be split regardless. Even if it's a, you can have a thousand acres, you want to divide in two pieces, if, if both pieces don't touch a public right of way, you're not gonna get the split.
Well, it says, it says if they're, from the plaque regarding this title, it's a larger parcel, and it gives some items on that. It's only issued for purpose of the open space or agricultural.
Yeah, the difference is that they're saying for plat, um, in other words, you don't have to plat the property to do that. So we're, we're taking the plotting process out of there, and you can just do a record and survey on it to do that. It's a simpler process. So, so just because we're allowing or not requiring a plat process, it doesn't take away the need that any lot that's created has to touch a public road of some kind.
By state requirement, that's the other.
This is out of, uh, this, well, actually, I'll let Sean answer that one.
So when you're creating a new lot, you're missing. And you're still not having voted the subdivision process, which is what the state law says, is you don't have to go to subdivision process or agricultural law, uh, to change if you're looking for purely agricultural purposes. So I don't know that it creates any confusion, except my concern is, are we wanting people to be able to create a lot that has no access? There's that's your reason.
No, it's planned a lot.
So, right, that's exactly what I'm saying.
There are different kinds of access, and you can have access on a private road, you can have access, I mean, it's a decision that people make. Certainly, a good decision needs to be made, I believe in decisions, I don't believe in.
Well, it says public right of way or dedicated road, and a public right of way just means that.
Because this is your, your, you are able to make that call. However, there are, then you'd want to bring the fire chief in, for example, to make sure that you won't have, uh, a right of way that is inaccessible if they should need to get back there for whatever reason. There are, there are numerous reasons why you want to take a look at that and the length of that access and the type of access that you've got.
And my process suggested that the fire chief be involved in these decisions. I, what I proposed was a procedure, not code. I proposed that the codes say nothing more complex than we do what state says as a minimum. And then you have a procedure within the town that has a process, people who are identified with responsibilities and, and are allowed to make decisions.
Yeah, on that checklist, do you have fire chief down there on that checklist?
I was gonna say, can you, do we have access to that checklist right now, so we can just clarify some of the things that are on the checklist, or do you have them in your head?
No, it's, it's in writing, but, uh, yeah.
Well, um, just a couple of notes, if it's a lot that's not on the main road, um, would a simple easement, public easement on that property that's in front of it suffice? And then as far as fire goes, before you can ever build in a lot anyways, you would have to have a fire.
You have to meet the other ordinance, that's right.
Hydrants, et cetera. Um, and if that lot was empty now, or if it's empty as last split, what would it matter? It's still both empty both ways.
And it still has to meet the requirements of, if they decide to do something else.
Building code, it would have to be.
Just saying that, and you know, I think you may have forgotten, but you could build a barn, it could be a pretty large barn on an agricultural piece of property without having to get a permit in certain cases. Uh, and so that's a structure that's someone would want to save. Of course, I don't know if that would affect the neighboring lands if that land was to catch on fire. So it's, it's, I'm simply saying that you would want to talk to the fire chief before making the decision if you were going to go over the route and not having any access required.
Well, we'll.
Everyone's saying no.
So it's actually, I, I.
We'll make sure that.
I've directed my question to the council, and then the council can answer.
Alright.
We'll make sure that in that process, that we have a fire chief as a check mark on our.
So access could be that simple easement, correct? Is that what I hear on that?
Well, we have a lot of properties out there that are just on two tracks. But I'm gonna just defer to the fire chief on lot splits and, and if, let him look at them, if he's happy with the access. Cause it's, if it's just only a, a two-track that goes by a lot, you know, I don't personally have a problem with it because that's how a lot of these properties are anyway. So you picture a hundred acres that's got a, just a jeep trail next to it. Is it more of a hazard because it's two fifties now?
Right.
And that's, now, as soon as they want a building permit, well, that's rough, twenty-six feet wide, and, you know, all that, you know, that's, as soon as they want a permit. I have no problem with that. But it, we have not increased the risk of any property out there if they have a hundred acres, and we made it two fifties, if they're both on this jeep trail, in my view. It just made it easier for the guy maybe to sell the property. And then at that point, the guy's probably thinking, you know, I wanna build something, so at that point, now he's got to do improvements up to town standards to be able to even do that, so.
Then the barn could go up now, or it could go up later, so same same, split or not?
Yeah. So, anyway, um, any other comments on this or questions on the? Uh, so to answer your question, Debbie, that's the reason I had ten, wasn't that we were going to encourage anyone to do ten. It was only because it was our trade number the state picked, and instead of charging someone two hundred and fifty dollars every time they come in to get three, and now they can come back and split it three more times. It's, it slows them down, they have to pay more in engineering just to accomplish what they're intending on, they can still get there. So why not just let them do it? Why not just make sure it's done the right first time and let them do it the first time? It's, I don't see the difference. Any other questions?
My question is just why not have a clearly defined procedure that all the various different departments, you're talking about code, I'm talking about a procedure.
And we, we have that to find out.
A lot of land that's gonna get a body number around here, ten parcels at a pop. And I'm fine with the ten parcels, I don't want somebody to have to do something three times when once would do it. But I wanna know that once got it done right, and I don't have confidence, from what I've seen, that that is predictably gonna happen. You know, some of these are straightforward, and some of them, I'm not doom gloom, oh my God, it's never gonna go right. But, um, I spoke with someone recently working with the town, and, uh, it was, I go here, I go there, talk to this person, don't talk to this person. It, it's, when you don't have a clearly defined process in writing with forms, you know, you haven't even bought, I haven't seen anyway, bothered to update the lot split form, the lot split application, what's the rush? Send it back to planning, get a procedure done that defines correctly, start with mine, because God knows, I spent six weeks working on this thing, and, and improve it. I didn't send it to be done, I said, send it to planning so that they could work on it and make it better based on what.
Well, we've, we've.
That's undone, I don't know how many times.
I appreciate your feedback, um, we've heard it several times, we've considered it several times, and, uh, the planning commission supports this based on, and we, we're adhering to, uh, their recommendations as well. And we've taken it a step further already, we do have a checklist that, um, Ben lined out for us, and I will, um, add the fire department onto that checklist or make sure it's on there, it could be, it's already on, but, um, anyway. So, we will, um.
I'll take care of it, don't worry about it.
Anybody wanna make a motion on this? Any other questions on it?
Would it be possible to have the checklist attached to this before we pass it? Or have the commission review the checklist?
Well, checklist is in a, um, and it's not an ordinance, it's a, it's a procedure that we're wanting to, um, implement to, that follows our code, it's already, so this is the, this is the actual code, the checklist is a procedural part of that to follow the code.
I think it makes sense to send it to the council and planning commission, we copy this and the area, whatever we do. I mean, it's, it's in the industry of, I'm gonna make.
Right.
Harold making a motion that we accept changes to 11.02.040, necessitive plat, exemption, plat requirements, orders 0-2020-20.
I'll second.
And we're going to delete that one item out.
And the recommendation, we also recommend that we make a motion to eliminate rock mountain power from the burbage. We do, I do want to caution though that we make sure that our internal procedure, we're governing that, is that we put close attention to that.
And everything that we put on paper is a procedure we've been doing all along as well, which is, is, it's rigorous. It's not, you know, Mary makes it sound like we're just passing these out like candy outside, but that's not the case. We, Anthony Bartles here, he can tell you how many months it'd take you to get approved. So it's, it's not an easy process and some cases where he didn't have access and so forth. So, anyway, so we have a motion on there. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
And vote?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. And item number 11, approval of Ross Gregerson as Big Plains treasurer. Big Plains has appointed him treasurer. I make a motion that we approve Ross Gregerson as Big Plains treasurer.
I second.
And vote?
Aye.
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 Item number 11, appointment of Big Plains...
12, number 12.
Town council board member.
Number 12.
Sorry, did I...
You said 11.
Oh, number 12, sorry. Number 12, appointment of Big Plains town council board member for the Big Plains water.
Before we put that, I spoke with Mr. Mayor last night and I think he had a suggestion or two that maybe I could put you on hot seat.
I don't know if we want to get into the long and the short of it.
No, we just want to name.
That I would, would certainly be favorable to your appointment to the water board via a discussion last night.
That is not what you told me last night. Okay.
Good.
You're good to do this?
I'm good.
Do that? All right, so I would move that we point Dale to the water board.
I'll second that.
And vote?
Aye.
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 And capital improvements study for Big Plains sewer capital. I've got a lot to say about this one. First off, the agenda is showing a 4-0 pass on that and it's actually 3-0. Just as a matter of clarification. So item number 13, this was put on the agenda. I have to be out of town. I'm just going to use some history and I'll tell you that for two years I've been asking Harold to, that we need to do an impact fee study. Our impact fee right now, our impact study is from 2012 and it was done prior to, as a part of the creation of the water district. And in 2013, the district was finally created. So that study is, is that old. And I've been suggesting for a long time, even at the time of our budget, we had a conversation about it, that we probably should be budgeting for an impact fee study. And I go out of town and it gets snuck on the agenda and approved and there's no paperwork on this. We have no idea what the scope of work is by Rod Mills. It doesn't have Rod Mills' name on it even. It doesn't have any vendor's name on it. Don't have any paperwork that approves. It's not in our budget. And I've, will further state that I had a conversation with Rod Mills, who's actually doing the study in, in around November. And it was after the election and I just told him that I just thought doing stupid stuff like having you, Rod Mills, do a impact study for the district, which you technically are employed by because he's voted as a, as our engineer for the district. And I, I've talked to a couple of different municipalities and I like the guy down in Hurricane. He says, that's like me standing in a bucket and trying to pick myself up. And, you know, comments like that. It's another comment I picked up was it's like Ben saying that, hey, I can do the audit and I can save us a lot of money. You know, instead of hiring a third party, there's a reason you go outside of the ranks to do different things like this. And, and having Rod Mills do that is not going outside the ranks at all. And so for the reason that I've stated, I think it's a, in fact, even then Rod Mills, by the way, just to finish my statement, told me in that moment that, no, it wouldn't be appropriate. It would be a conflict of interest. Back in November, fast forward to a couple of months ago when this first passed the water board, it was, no, it's not a conflict of interest, even though six months, seven months earlier, it was a conflict of interest. And I, I'm opposed to it because of the conflict of interest and I'm opposed to it because it wasn't budgeted. I'm opposed to it because we also don't have a scope of service of who's paying, getting paid what and what they're doing for the money. So we're, we're basically authorizing the Big Plains to write a check for $10,000. A year or two from now, when we're trying to figure out what did we spend that money on again? There's not any paperwork in there that says, here's what we've got for our money because it's not as... There should be a scope of work document in here. We've asked for that a month ago and as of today, we still don't have it. So anyway, that's how I feel about it. Anybody have any questions on it or comments? I'll, you know, Harold, Harold, I'll let you get to the other side of the version of the story if you like.
To state my insight of it is that Rod Mills has been there since the beginning of time. He has all the paperwork on the purchase of the original water system from Goobers, purchase of Cedar Point, purchase of Canyon Springs, all of those, construction with, et cetera. All of that that had to be gone through by a new person to compile a lot. Anyway, he has all of that in one file. He is putting it together and he and I had the discussion that we needed a peer review. And so we talked to Zion's Bank. They said, do their financial arm, they do impact fee studies all the time. They would take his capital improvement study and do a peer review on that. Then they would develop a water impact fee study and purely do that and produce that as a Zion's Bank document. I was happy with that. So I'm saying the information is available. If we need to get a scope, and I've asked Rod about it, and if we don't have it, we'll get it. But I've asked Rod to get those documents to you or to the town.
Okay.
And I'm saying that we're reinventing the wheel to go out and hire another engineer to come in here and try to go through something that somebody had been through for the last 10 years.
I have, I have a question for Harold.
Yes.
Yeah, considering that he's, yes, considering that he's been working for, for, for you and for the town so long, do you really feel that he can give an objective opinion based on the close working relationship that he has with everybody?
He doesn't have a dog in his bite. He's being paid a minimal amount to do this study. It will be in the $5,000 range. Impact fee study's been $30,000 to $40,000. If you send a qualified engineer out to turn over all the rocks. So we're, from my point of view, we're saving $30,000 and going to come up with the same product. Now, if he was peer reviewing it and saying, this is my work, I'm going to give it to you, take it, there it is. But it's being ran through a reputable organization, Zion's Bank. They're going to review his, his, his work, his information, whatever they want to do before they stamp it. And they were willing to do that for roughly $5,000. So it would be a complete capital improvement study and the Zion's Bank peer reviewed water impact fee study for under, or roughly, let's say $10,000. I think it's a bargain. And I think it's being done by some great people. So that's my approach to it.
Good, thanks.
If they need some more background information or the scope of work or whatever, we can fill that in. But I don't think we need to throw this out the window because I think it's being done by qualified people. I think we have all the information in-house. That's why we keep people here as long as we can so they know what's going on.
Okay.
May I make a comment?
Uh, yeah.
As a citizen, somebody who pays for water here, lives here, I think we ought to have a different engineer to let them alone. I deal with water services systems. I put them in all over the place, not just here. But not really, I think, just Rod as a person. I don't like him. I don't think he's good for our town. Every project I've been involved with Rod Mills on has strung out from here to China. And he says, well, he's got this stuff. He's been here this whole time. And so when people bring him a project and say, hey, design this, Rod, because you have everything. I mean, he brings it to him seven different times before it gets right. I thought he had the stuff. He doesn't even know what's pipes in the ground. He draws stuff for people based on, on a line that's not even the right line. He doesn't call Dale first and say, hey Dale, real quick, what's this line? He doesn't have all this information. He sister charges people money to design crap and takes forever. Guy's a joke.
Rod, you want to say something?
No, I don't think so. I, I stand by the integrity that I practice my profession on. This kind of discussion is common in this particular jurisdiction and...
Is it normal, Rod, not to, a scope of service when you present anything that's going to require that kind of a check to be written? Is it not normal for your business to do that?
So it's completely normal to have a scope of work and the scope of work that was discussed is included in the code that requires impact fee studies to be conducted. We are following the code. We are following the scope of work that is included in the state code. And the document itself, as, as put together to this point, articulates by item each of those scope items as required by the state.
Hey, I'd like to see that. I don't have it in my packet.
We don't, it's, it's just that any time we're writing a check of that size, we're supposed to have a scope of work that goes with it. It's kind of like, here's what I'm going to do for this much money. And then when we get the invoice, it, it just, we line it up that is the invoice and the check match the scope of work that we've, were promised and so forth. It's, it's just, it's paperwork and it's a... I, I have a problem because you told me one time that, yeah, you're right, it's, back in November, you and I had a conversation, I know you remember it, that it's, you should not be doing that. And then today, you're saying differently. So I just have, I got to be...
And Marty, I do remember the conversation.
It's not unusual.
You are, you are taking that, that conversation out of context. We did talk about conflicts of interest and so forth. But that, that statement you're making is out of context.
May I make a statement?
Yeah.
I wish that we could take personalities out of this. I know you would rather the ground, Rod, than not. And I'm sure he has some feelings going either way. Richard Fisher doesn't have any way to leave that or his that. And I'm saying that I've been the chairman of the service district for eight years. I was a member of the board before that. And I will say that Rod has been slow on giving some things to us. Richard Fisher's referring to a document that showed the pipeline without a size on it. They took a phone call to figure that out or they called Dale. That's not a major thing.
Not at all. Well, let's, let's not, let's not get into it. We've done this.
The point is that I feel comfortable with it. I do not have the final say on this.
Okay.
I think that we could back up everything that we're talking about with paperwork, whatever we feel is appropriate. But that's where I stand.
Okay, thanks. Yeah.
I see some, you know, some tug of war run on here. This is indicative of what Harold and I talked about last night when trying to find a pathway to the future that we can kind of work together and eliminate some of these things. I should have commented on that earlier, Harold, that, that we, you know, we had that good productive conversation last, last night. I think you and I can work together to resolve some of these issues. But for the time being today, we have a fiduciary responsibility to this community to ensure that our dollars are protected and wisely spent. We just spent a few minutes talking about procedures. And I think what Mayor's really trying to push here is that there was a procedural gap that was circumvented and we're trying to rein that back in. And I don't, comments about personal people, personal comments towards people and views isn't really what we're trying to achieve here. So if I could just get back on track and just talk about the circumcision of that process that we have to go through, I hope you guys can understand and recognize it's not intended to be... Some of the comments that was made about Rod don't need to be in this conversation. We, but we do have a procedure we need to go through and we do need to see the scope of work before we can take any action on it. Okay? That's my point.
Okay.
I can't vote on something I haven't seen, so I haven't seen the documentation.
Is this, is this an item we can table?
Yeah.
I guess.
Yeah, table it again. Yeah. Okay.
Rod, if you could get that over to us, we'd really would appreciate it. We'll get that, we'll get that processed as soon as fast as we can.
And so we, someone want to make a motion on...
I'll make a motion that we table. Item number 13. Give my real last one. I make a motion we table item number 13, Big Plains Water and Sewer Capital Improvement Study and Zion's Public Finance Water Impact Fee Study. That's approved by the board 3-0.
And a second?
Second.
And vote?
Aye.
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 Do you guys want to mention why, like, they even like point for that scope of work in there or anything like that?
Yeah, same last time.
Yeah, I'd like to add that to the motion that we table this till we have a point to review those documents that we're expecting then. And will we take any further action on this?
And finish the vote. Let's start over on the vote.
Aye.
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 Paul, are you there? Mike was. Is Paul still on?
Shows he's still there.
Yeah, he's not muted. At least he's muted for some reason.
Good Rod, don't make...
Paul, you're muted.
Can he type his answer to the...
Yeah, I said aye several times.
All right, yeah, you're on mute.
There you are.
Good for you. We're going to send help.
Mike.
Mike, yeah.
All right, reports and recommendation. Planning commission, if you wanted to say anything since you're here?
Yeah. On item 10, now the notices for lot splits are going to be on the website.
They're on the agenda.
Item 10, the plat exemption.
Yeah, you'll, you'll see them on the second page of the agenda.
They're on the agenda. Item 10, the plat exemption.
Yeah, you'll, you'll see them on the second page of the agenda.
I just want to make sure these are notices are going to be on the website. For lot splits, lot splits.
Well, they're, they're going to be on the agenda for every, every meeting.
Not on the website.
Where would we put them on the website? Or what, they've been, under notices?
I appreciate it. You know, that way I think everybody gets a chance to look at what's going on.
So when we do legal notices, that's for like public hearings and things like that. I don't, I don't think that doing a public notice website for lot splits is not appropriate.
From here.
Yeah. Train everybody, that's where they're at. They look at the agenda every week. That's where they'll be the same place.
And Ellen asked for a, to see the block of signatures also. Okay. So if we could have that explained, I'd appreciate it.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, is it possible to have the list that she's talking about on the water bills? On the back of the water bills? Ben?
Back where?
On the back of the water bills.
Oh, we could do that too.
Well, we could.
Then everybody can come. Transparency is, is kind of what we want to get. And if we have it on this, this is fine. People need to know they need to check it. Because these are, you're huge lots of land.
What, what was it on the website?
Can I just mention that the agendas are on the, on the website and they're also on the public notice website? So you've got those parcel numbers already on the website. If you look at the agenda.
Twice.
Like, some of these are hundred, hundred acre parcels. How many lots splits have you?
On the hundred acre things?
Yeah.
We did, um, maybe a three or four of them, was it two years ago?
Okay.
That's about it.
Okay.
We, there's not that many. And they're only in the, from 120 acres down to 340, that kind of thing.
Yeah, I've just said transparency and that, that's all.
I, I just think that this is a adequate and like she said, it's published publicly and, uh, two different places along with our website, along with the state website. And, uh...
I appreciate the transparency. So, you know, it's, it's a lot better than other mayors have done in the past.
If someone feels passionate about it, we can donate a page in the website and they can be the one that, uh, logs in and adds them to it. If that's, you know, we can grant access to someone if they, if you guys want to do it that badly. So... I'm just trying to sometimes like to manage what I have to do again. Anyway, um, next on the agenda, Fire Chief?
Yeah. So we got a few A mouse calls. Uh, we had three true fires just the last, uh, two weeks that were all due and caused. We're under fire restrictions, so I've already handed out some, we've already had to share a piece of people. So, um, if you are burning, you're not calling us and you're not checking the website, you're not checking the county website. Everything is under fire restrictions now. Stop burning. Don't burn anything. Okay? I've told people two days before they've lit stuff up, when they've lit trees on fire. So, um, no burning, none. You can burn in your little campfire pits that meet the regulations that the state hand down to us. And those are in here on the bulletin board. If you look at those, if you want to build a fire pit and cook some Dutch oven or something like that, then that's 100% fine. The stop burn aids, it's not going to go right now, then you will be fine. Also, to, to go into that, you're still not getting much moisture. I know it's feeling cooler in the evenings and everything like that. So people are feeling a little more brave. Like I said, just don't burn until, until you get further notification from me or the county, don't do it. Also, I've seen a lot of people doing mitigation work here and there, and I take pictures just so you know. You see me taking pictures of you outside in your yard doing work. I'm using that towards our mitigation for it now because we're not getting too many people actually coming in here and filling out that big board. And, uh, I need to set some comment of the meller or something like that so that people know they got to come in here after they clean weeds up or something like that. They gotta, they gotta fill out that big board. It's not just for burn season. It's for all year round. It helps us for that impact service that we're going to get hit with at the end of the year to meet our, uh, our agreement with the government. So, um, that agreement is going to go up this year. We've had a lot of fires. We've had, um, we've had a lot of close fires. So this year I have been warned that our impact service is going to grow up. So we are going to need the community's help. This doesn't solely fall along to the fire department. We are going to need the community's help. We can't meet this, this requirement that we have. So... Um, so just a reminder, when you're out there doing yard work and stuff like that, even if you want to follow me and tell me how many hours you worked or something like that, that's going to help a million. So I have to log all of that and I have to submit it to the state. How many, how many hours are we so far for our area? It's not hours. It's, it's a wage. So it's a wage determination. So if you're an actual firefighter, we do that, then it comes out to $25 an hour, which I can bill. But if it's a normal person, I think they have it down to like, I want to say like $12 or $14 an hour. So, and right now we're at $14,000. That's what we got, $14,000 or $15,000. That's going to go up. We met it last year with all the submittals I put in and we met it three before. So this year it's going to go up because of our risk. Our risk went up a lot this year. So, um, I know we got it.
Can you, can you go back? Can people go back the last couple of months and add up the hours and give it to you? Okay.
As long as it's legit and you really did it, I'm not going to, I mean, it's going to help us out.
Okay.
Also, uh...
What's the, what's the, what's the calendar year on that? How far back do you want to be able to go to?
Just this year.
Okay, so it's calendar year 2020, you're okay?
Yeah, they, they have some questions. Yes, 100%.
I pay for a service.
Anything you do with brush on the property, it works towards that impact service. So... By the way, her husband mentioned to me when we were talking about their stuff out there. Got a track with the brush beater on it. If anybody has that around there, they're...
Come out, look at what it does. It's neatly and have a paper.
Yeah, that's really good. All right. So, um, moving on, uh, the Hummer, we got a new tank. I went to Leeds this week. And I did, picked up a tank. We got one of our old pumps running, so we're pretty much ready to start, uh, testing out the Hummer so that we can get the pump off the back and get the tank in there. So that'll be another Type 6 engine that if we, next year, if we are able to get out of fires like we did this year, here and there, we'll have that Type 6 here to cover the area better so that we are feeling more comfortable about being more than $15 or $20 a day. So, um, that's something we're working on. We're getting real close to possibly being able to paint that and get everything ready for this next season. So that's a, that's a big goal we're trying to make this year is trying to have that ready for this next season. Also, we have, we're probably going to be hosting a, uh, a pumps class within the next two weeks here at the station. We're probably going to have Hurricane, uh, maybe Washington City. Couple of the departments that I've invited to come here. And we're probably going to have a pumps class for wildland to get some people signed off. It's, it's a check on one of our passports that we're going to have signed off. So, um... Also, here in the next month or two, we're going to start seeing rats. The highways are going to start getting a little, you know, hanging on like wetness and that type of stuff. And our humidity comes in when we start getting closer to there. These roads, for some reason, right about the first time of the year, we start getting a lot, a lot of rats. So it usually fizzles out towards the end of the year, but right, right at the beginning of the year, people are just not used to this road and possibly being slick at five, four in the morning when people are going to work. So just watch out if you go to work in the morning early. Be mindful that we're, we're getting close to those lower temperatures at night. So... And also, I guess, uh, I got my engine boss training, well, my squad boss booked, signed off, and it's getting approved right now. So next year is a guarantee for, uh, for at least me having the engine boss training. So we're getting very, very close to be able to, um, succeed at going out of the stage. I don't know if anyone's ever written that book, but that's a big deal. And he's right behind me. He's in his squad boss book right now and he's doing a lot. We got a lot signed up on him this year on the fires that we've traveled on. So that's, that's a big deal also. And, uh, that's all I have. Anybody got any questions about anything that's going on or? Thank you. Thank you.
All right, nice job. Do you want to share, Harold?
Just for everybody's information mostly, uh, we requested bids for the, uh, Cannon Springs project. Uh, we opened the bids the first part of this month and worked the, uh, contract with P C R. That, uh, project in its entirety were around $700,000. And it'll be for the development of the Cannon Springs and some factoring out of the springs and, uh, enhance the, uh, water flow in the canyon and we'll know exactly where to have the waters open in the springs. So that work should start about first of October.
Has that funded or what's the status of that?
They said that, uh, it would, would fund. They sent us the contractor was staged and ready to go.
So it's all...
Bank account went down open and ready to open.
Let me know when the money hits the bank. I got some people wanting to hear that.
Got grant, but we got that.
100%.
Yeah.
You did good on that one.
Harold, what was that total?
$700,000 plus. And Harold did that too.
Yeah.
But, uh, one thing, one word, I should talk about the flood of people coming this way from, from St. George and, and Hurricane. We have a finite amount of, of water here. And water is going to limit this land operation sooner or later. And we can overrun our, our, our headlights really soon here. So I would caution people buying land or getting off to the grid, so to speak. Well drilling is not an answer. Uh, so water is absolutely critical. Being able to deliver your site as well as having the ability to get it out of the ground. And, and, uh, anybody that's lived in most part of the world very long knows that there is an end to this. So to, to buy 50 acres, to put in 500 buildings, I just have cold chills. It's two or three of those and everybody's going to be trucking water from somewhere. So just keep that in mind. There is an end to this somewhere. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, this is where you'll see on the agenda for those that have one, when lots splits show up, we have, uh, the, uh, lots splits listed that we have applications for, um... I'm not sure if I've got these, looked at any of these yet, even myself. But, uh...
Yeah, none, none of them are approved at this time.
They're just the application we received. And then, uh, building permits, uh, through August is, uh, we have five homes, one casita and one accessory building so far. Our building permits have just kind of skyrocketed here recently. We're pretty busy on them. So... Uh, council have anything?
Nope.
Nope.
And, uh, public comments? All open public comments up.
Junior?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Um, I want to say thank you to Ben. He's been a serious big help to the fire department. He's been, he's done a lot for us. He's helped out a lot. He's also a part of the town. I just want to say from the fire department, uh, we really appreciate you, Ben, and thank you for your help.
I tried to get the hurricane marching band to follow him out of the town today. They were, they were tied up in other commitments. But, uh, yeah, he, he will be missed. There's no doubt about it.
I would like to echo the same. Ben's just been wonderful to work with and really easy to work with. Somewhere truly can miss you.
He's got big shoes.
He's going to miss us too.
I doubt it.
There's no doubt about that. Maybe I'll take just a, just a quick minute if you'll...
Yep.
Public comments.
Yes.
Happy to resonate, right?
Yes.
So I, uh, I started in Apple Valley almost two years ago. Um, it has been quite a ride. I had no idea what I was in for. I've tried to stay neutral and, um, and try and understand everybody's side, all the different sides and situations that come before the town. And by doing that, I've kind of gained a lot of insight and a lot of respect for a lot of people in this town. A lot of them are here today, Fire Chief Harold, Marty. I, through this time, I'm one of two full-time employees that, that work in the town. And, uh, you know, and as I've seen the efforts that everyone has put in, the time and the effort that people put into this town, it's made me at times feel guilty for being a, a salaried employee. You know, I've, I've met a lot of the residents. This community is great. And when you can really take a step back and look at Apple Valley, it's an, it's an awesome community. I mean, short of schools, you know, if there, I've got two little kids in school and it, and that's a challenge. I respect that. I've moved here in a heartbeat. I appreciate the opportunity that I've had to work with each and every one of you. I know that, uh, Apple Valley has a bright future. It really is a, an awesome place. I've committed to, so for those that don't know, I, I accepted an offer with the Solid Waste District. And I've committed to, um, essentially meeting with every municipality, uh, once a year. And so you haven't gotten rid of me yet. I'm excited to come back here probably about a year and, and say how my job's been going. It'll probably be my favorite report that I do. It's all the towns and cities. So, um, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity, guys.
Thank you. Mayor, it is nice to know that you'll continue to take Apple Valley's trash.
Good one, Sean.
You're awesome. Any other public comments? All right, we'll close public comments. And, uh, we don't have any for post session. I'm not aware of one anyway.
Nope.
Okay, so...
I make a motion. Will you adjourn?
Second.
Vote?
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
It's dark. I gotta drive in the dark.
So if you want those on our website someplace, Debbie, I can put a page in there and teach you how to do it.